Specifically, I saw a group of students standing out in the lobby. They were not smiling, but I want to say welcome. A welcome smile. We're friendly people. They're looking good. So thank you all for being here. Please let us join together and stand and pray to lead us to the flag. I pray to lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Again, we thank you for your presence at our regular March meeting. There's an agenda. Of course, let me say the public may view this meeting through the YouTube link provided. Item number two, point one, recognition, Ms. Hope.
Good evening, Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Bridges. I'm excited to introduce the Employee of the Month for March. Kristi Nakarado, who is a technology assistant, is always the first to volunteer to assist anyone with any task. She's very creative and talented with everything she does, whether it's creating the Edge Squad logo, resolving technology and phone issues, designing and printing employee badges, or just helping to maintain the day-to-day activities at the Pearl Street office. She always has a smile on and is eager to help. They refer to her here as the GOAT, Board's the greatest of all times, the Pearl Street GOAT. Kristi truly loves ECPS and goes above and beyond to make us shine. Congratulations to Kristi Nakarado.
Congratulations, absolutely.
Greg Sessom sponsors this award. He's a state farm agent here in town. He'll give the gift card to you this week.
I want you to know I'm wearing your hand to work.
Thank you.
Item number three, public comments. I do hold a sheet. No one has signed up. So we move now, if you will, to item number four, the approval of the agenda. You have had an opportunity to read, view, and reread the agenda. Are there any corrections, deletions, or additions?
We have one addition, 6.9. If you'll add that for items for information, evolve, express, walkthrough, security scanner. 6.9. Thank you.
Others? Hearing none. Did we hear a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
All for motion that we accept the agenda as amended.
Motion in second for the approval of the agenda as amended. You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion, questions, or unreadiness? Hearing none. Those in favor, let be known by using the voting sign aye. Opposites like sign ayes have it. And that motion carried. Let's see. There is item number five, the approval of the open session minutes for February the 13th, 2023. You've had an opportunity to read those minutes as well. Are there any corrections, deletions, omissions, or additions? Hearing none. Those in favor, let it be known by using the voting sign aye. Opposites like sign ayes have it. And that motion carried. Let's see. There is item number five, the approval of the open session minutes for February the 13th, 2023. You've had an opportunity to read those minutes as well. Are there any corrections, deletions, omissions, or additions? Hearing none. Those in favor, let it be known. Now, I need a motion. I'm sorry. I moved it. And Dino didn't even tell me that. Now, he didn't have a game. Motion in second for the approval of the open minutes of February the 13th. You've heard that motion in second. And further discussion, questions, or unreadiness? Hearing none. Those in favor, let be known by using the voting sign aye. Opposites like sign ayes have it. And that motion carried. Item number 6.1, items for information.
6.1, you should have three different sheets. So you should have one sheet that says update. You could have a second sheet that says tentative summer programs 2023. And you should have a third one that says Edgecombe County Public Schools valedictorian, salutatorian versus Latin honors. If you're full of all three of those, I'm going to start with updates. And Dr. Myrick will end with valedictorian, salutatorian, Latin honors. So that first one, just have a couple headlines there. Edge Academy of Health Science, we are continuing to plan for the new school. We know that that campus will be at Rocky Mount. Dr. Bass has visited all of the Milland High Schools to share details about the program. Applications have gone out. The deadline for the applications is March 15th, and the team plans to meet the prospective school students in April. So we'll begin to look at those applications and make some determinations. If we determine we need to extend the application deadline, we may have to do that as well.
Absolutely. We will have a particular number of students that we are trying to get.
So we want 59th graders and 50th graders. And we are also opening that up to the students that would be a part of the D merger. So I talked with the superintendent in Nash, and he's been amenable to that. So we can also offer those students a spot his way. Okay? All right. Great.
Do the Nash students fit into the deadline as prescribed now?
No, sir. So Dr. Bass will need to go to those schools and do the same thing, share information. We have it on the website. So we know those students, that deadline will not work for them. Okay? Okay? And then Battle of the Books. So we had held Battle of the Books for elementary students on February 24th at Edgecombe Community College. We want to say congratulations to Millennium Academy. They won first place. But we also want to say that the other students and representatives did an amazing job. So really proud of our students for continuing the Battle of the Books process. Step Student Activities. So we have several listed, and if you would, mark your calendars. But we've just had the Steps Brick City STEM competition. We had that at Nash Community College. That was on March 3rd. But we have two other events coming up. One on February, on March 24th. Step will host the 6th through 8th grade students at the Rocky Mount Event Center. And then the next one will be the Middle School STEM Design, and that will be on April 6th. We had, sorry.
Question.
Okay. We had Amplify Day last Friday. Our elementary teachers were working on their letters training, so they couldn't be a part of that. But all other staff members were able to go to Tarver High School for a day of learning. There were lots of different sessions and designs, really engaging and supporting all of the growth for our ECPS student. So that was our Amplify Day, and that was kind of a shortened day than sometimes we've done a full day, but that's what we had this time. Again, exciting, glad to have all of us together and being able to spend time together. And the last item, you have a question?
Ever.
Okay.
The Amplify, it would feel really nice if it was just me, the speaker. And it was so nice because she was, I mean, she was very engaging, and I thought it was a great job. They did a great job there.
Thank you. Okay. And then the final, Read Across America Week. And so we know that district-wide and nationally, we had Read Across America weekly activities. We had community readers. Several of you all were out and about in schools and reading with classes or with small groups of students. Want to say a special thank you to Dr. Dove for leading the effort to plan the events to celebrate the joy of reading. So again, thank you all for participating. We'll continue to do that. Okay. So that's that one. The second one you have is just to give you some of the summer camps that we have. You've seen this last year over the years. Just wanted you to see what the summer camps were, the dates, the times, and who the audience were. So we've tried to hit a number of things. When you see RTA, that's Read to Achieve Camp, and the sites to be determined. We only have those at several different sites throughout the district. But just wanted you, again, to see the remediation, the Career Accelerator, Read to Achieve, Kindergarten Transition Camp. So lots of camps. You see the dates there. We will connect and make sure, like for maintenance, that they know when we're having these camps so that if work is being done in the schools, they know when they can be in schools and when they need to not be in schools on certain calls and processes. Okay?
Dr. Be, at the beginning, during, at the beginning of COVID, the pandemic stages, we were planning for several years of summer, and we put some money aside. Is this the third year or the second year?
This is the third year. This is our third year. Okay. Any other questions about the summer camps? Okay. We'll ask Dr. Myrick if he'll come forward and share about valedictorian, salutatorian versus Latin honors.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Bridges. So before you, you have valedictorian and versus Latin honors. And Dr. Bass could not be here this evening. He prepared this for us. And so what I'm going to do, I'm just going to highlight a couple of things. The first two bullets, it talks about what we did prior to the 21-22 school year in terms of recognizing our students. All of this came about when the state changed our grading system from a seven-point scale to a 10-point scale, and then they sort of standardized honors, AP classes, college classes to sort of fall in line with the same number of value points. And so tonight, I just want to point your attention to, under Latin honor systems, the first bullet. Apparently, we recognize both valedictorian and salutatorian as Latin honors in our district. And the language that's below is what's listed in our registration bulletin that our families receive each spring. And then the next bullet that's bold, once adopted, allowed Latin honor system, we've noticed in that many boards around us, where many boards throughout the state have gone to phasing out the valedictorian and salutatorian designation because in some districts, especially in larger districts, you start getting multiple students with the same exact GPA. And so it was really kind of canceling how valedictorian and salutatorian in school districts are moving more towards letting students to be speakers rather than having the valedictorian and the salutatorian be the designated object for each kid. So the rest of this document just kind of highlights who's doing what in the districts. Like on last bullet, on the first page, counties do not recognize valedictorian and salutatorian. You can see who those districts are there. And then there are also counties that recognize both. But I would like to point out that Pitt County and Green County are planning to revisit their practice on this now. And so, and then, of course, we have one county that's only recognizing the valedictorian and the salutatorian. And this is just some information for you to kind of hold on to as you continue your work.
This is just a general question. If we were to go with the Latin honors only, on the transcript, would the class rank be listed there?
Yes, ma'am. The class, the class rank would stay the same. For example, if you have multiple students that are number one, multiple students that are number 10, it will go to the next number. Like if there are two number 10s, do my math, then your next number will be like number 20.
Okay. I had, I had a couple of parents call about that, so I was just to make sure that was clarified. Thank you.
I've been chatting with Pitt County people who are interested in it. I've bit piqued my interest. Have you heard any conversation from around anywhere about our doing that, or it just comes from us?
No, it just comes from us. Yeah. And we've talked about it. We, you know, it may be that we want to phase it out. So someone is currently, you know, in the 11th grade, and they're number one in the class, that taking that away now might be harmful. So we might want to phase it out.
I noticed that we have in the policy manual some information that the policy committee has studied and is bringing to us tonight to approve or disapprove. Does that have anything to do with the policy? Does the policy address that what's in here? Because I'm thinking what I'm reading in the policy information is not the same here, but I'm not sure. That's why I'm asking. And maybe something you need to go back and look at, and you may not be able to answer now, especially if Mr. Bass is not here, because he may have looked at this policy to see how it coincides with this.
This is, this will be the procedure to coincide with the policy.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah. He put this together to say, in the event you want to change.
Okay. The policy is still as, as it is.
As it is.
It's just something for you to think. The one would be for a few years.
That's what I.
So we would have to redo a policy if we, if we want to.
All right. That's, that's the answer I needed.
Other comments, questions? Here and there. Thanks. Oh, 6.3, I'm sorry. Please.
6.2.
Last month, we had the pleasure of listening to four additional schools. We've heard three, so now we're up to seven. So tonight, I'm excited that we have three more schools coming to talk about the great things that have gone on in their buildings, and they're going to come up in the following order. Edgecombe Early College will come first, then North Edgecombe, and then Phillips Middle School will be closing us out this evening. And so we know who all of those principals are. So I'm going to, Mr. Smith?
Can you all have a copy?
Yes, we have a copy of the presentations, and they are in order of how they want to present this meeting.
Well, good evening, Board Chair and Vice Chair, Superintendent Bridges, and members of the board. 123. All right. Well, I've prepared for you a 90-minute presentation tonight about the school that I planned. However, as a courtesy, I am setting my timer now at seven minutes and have a bargain, a gentleman's bargain with Dr. Myrick, that I will do 50 push-ups for you if I take more than seven minutes. We will get rolling because I'm not sure I can pull off 50 push-ups, given my stature. With that, I'd like to share with you a little information about Edgecombe Early College High School and our school improvement work. I'd like to begin by saying that we launched this school year with the theme "Best Year Yet," because coming out of the pandemic last year, our theme was family reunion, students returning to school, bringing the family back together. But this year, we wanted to be aspirational in our work, and so our theme this year has been "Best Year Yet," and we've tried to weave that into everything that we've done. So as a data snapshot, I'd like to share with you our school performance grade and our growth metrics since 2014, when I became principal. I will share that I think that the school performance grades in general in North Carolina still have a lot of work to be done to accurately reflect the work that schools do. And so while we are excited that we had an A school performance grade since 2014, I think it's also worth acknowledging that the school performance grade does not accurately reflect, in my opinion, the many things that make schools work. What I will share is that we are excited that we've exceeded growth since 2014, and that has been something we've been very excited about, particularly this year, 2021-22, we were in the top 5% of schools across the state. And so the EVOs growth metrics are an area that we look at to try to measure how well we're doing because our goal is that we grow students as much as we possibly can. Part of the reason for that, I'm pleased to share, is that we've had 100% staff retention at our school for the last three years. And so when you have a team, you build your team, you cultivate your team, you nurture your team, and you retain your team, then that helps us to pick up in August where we left off in June without having to take two steps back. So we're very excited about that. And I would give all credit to everything positive that's done in our school, to the team members at our school that do all the work. So they're not here with us tonight. Would also like to share a little bit about our growth metrics, our DOC data from last year. We were way in the blue on Math 1 and Math 3. If you look at our growth indexes on the right, you'll see that we were far exceeding the growth metrics for those students. We did also meet expected growth in both English 2 and Biology, although we were very close in English 2 to exceeding growth. So we still continue to have work to do in all of our areas as we try each year to grow kids as much as we possibly can. Also like to share with you our ACT growth data. ACT is widely regarded as a career and college readiness metric, and we're pleased to share that we were way in the blue on our exceeding growth for our ACT composite. What's interesting about that is if you take a look at the four subtests for the ACT, English, Math, Reading, and Science, this is actually the order that the test is given in. So students take English first, and then they take Math, and then they take Reading, and then they take Science. And if you look at our growth metrics, you'll see, I think our kids get worn out over the course of this test. It's the longest standardized test they take in high school. One of the things we'll probably need to work on over the next year or two is just endurance. It is a very, very, very long, long test, and kids have to really do something that we ask them not to do anywhere else. We ask them, they have to sit quietly for about four hours while they take the test. It's very challenging. So a couple of quick themes. One, we believe strongly in relentless positive action. We believe that the work has to be relentless, it has to be positive, and we have to have an orientation towards action. And we also think that doing the simple stuff better, it helps to guide our work. So building relationships with kids and with families, engaging in continuous improvement, always believing that we can grow. So those two things, relentless positive action, doing the simple stuff better, help to guide our work. So in terms of our school improvement goals for this year, we had four. Our first one was about scholars experiencing an academically rich environment. Our second one was about our school family members engaging in a culture of inclusivity, belonging, self-efficacy, and student agency, especially with a focus on equity-centered practices and pedagogy. Our third one was about addressing academic deficits in real time. We've targeted interventions that help students to reach or exceed proficiency. And then the last was about making sure that we demonstrate great appropriate proficiency in reading, writing, thinking, and speaking. That mastery is so important, then we want to make sure to push kids to be on grade level or above. Part of our work that we're excited about has to do with the site-based decision-making with our, our school improvement team. So we have five domains in our school improvement team. Teacher leadership, safe and orderly schools, family and community engagement, instructional excellence, and school climate and culture. And we have team members that lead that work, so excited about that. Wanted to share with you some early work we're doing now in trying to create a crosswalk between the North Carolina Portrait of a Graduate, Edgecombe County's graduate aims, and then the work that we do at our school. We really think it's important, and there's work to be done in making sure that the work at our school is aligned with our own ECPS graduate aims and also aligned with the district aims. We're very early in this work. I guess we were, we technically, we'd be beta testing this at this point, but it's an effort we're trying to make to not just do good work, but to make sure that our work is aligned with what the district wants us to be working on and also the state in terms of the outcomes they want us to be achieving. We're also trying to find ways to manage our workflow. As you guys know, we're always juggling 18 different balls at one time, or spinning plates. We have, you know, 10 different pots on the stove. And so we're working with Gantt charts to try to manage the, the workflow of our school improvement team and all of our five domain teams to make sure that we don't just say we're going to do stuff, but we figure out when we're going to do it and how we're going to do it, and who's going to be responsible for it. So a couple of highlights, as I get to my 62nd mark, I'm trying to avoid my 50 push-ups. Very excited about our five scholar teachers that are graduating this year and that want to become educators. Three of these folks, Dariana, Elise, and Josh, just received $40,000 transformational scholarships to NC State University. Madison, second over from the left, just got a $26,000 scholarship to East Carolina to be a Maynard Scholar. So clearly, the grow our own work that we're doing with scholar teachers is starting to get attention. Also excited about our robotics team, the state grant we had with that led by Joseph Hayes and his team. We've been excited about students working not just with robotics, but also in elementary schools, doing some, some team building there. Making up for lost time with the pandemic, we, this year, we decided to take every one of our students in grades nine through 12 to Washington, DC. On Thursday, I'll be boarding a charter bus and taking 40 students to Washington, DC for our freshman trip. That has been important, as we've been trying to, again, make this the best year yet. The shirt I'm wearing in that picture says OG Bristow Smith. The young lady I'm hugging there made that shirt for me, and so I wore it with us to Washington, DC. She's fantastic. Our Black History Month event was last month, and so we're excited about that. That was a student senior project, and she did that, organized that, Jabria Davis. And then also, before my time runs out, we're excited about a lot of the grants that we've been doing. That's not 50 push-ups, Dr. Myrick. We've written a lot of grants this year to try to support some of our work. And you'll see that we got five Bright Ideas Grants, a $15,000 North Carolina Outdoor Heritage Council Grant, and then also a $3,000 Go Outdoors Grant, which is funding the charter bus for our freshmen to go to DC. So with that, I'll stop and remind you of our school motto, "Be yourself, leave completely changed." And if you have questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Questions?
This is not a question. It's a comment. It appears that you're leaving, you're living up to your motto.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
And you can do the push-ups.
Good evening to our Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Bridges. Shavon Creekey, very excited to stand here and share about North Edgecombe and the work we're doing this year. So I'm going to start by sharing our school improvement goals, giving a snapshot of where we ended last year, where we are so far with our data, and then highlight some very interesting things that we are doing this year in North Edgecombe. So starting with our school improvement goals, we have some goals based around our increase in our proficiency data, in our graduation cohort rate. We recognize that several students are coming to us in high school. Sometimes they're not finishing, or they don't make it to us at all. And so that graduation cohort rate is very important for us. Students improvement in college and career readiness is one of our goals. Reaching all students with excellent teachers through recruitment and retention, and then exceeding growth. And so just taking a snapshot at where we ended last year. You know, last year was our first full school year. Following the pandemic, we had the higher year, the previous year, than our first full school year. And we were able to see an increase in proficiency growth, even despite that being our first year back. Our school met growth, but what's also really important for us is that North Edgecombe is a great place for students to learn and for teachers to work. And so looking at our teacher working conditions data, 92.86% of our staff agree that North Edgecombe is a good place to work and learn. So looking at our first semester, we are already seeing some major growth in our Math 3. We have seen some decline in Biology, but we are working on that. And our Math 1 and English 2 students have not tested yet. So even though we're really happy to see that we are growing in certain areas, our data really helped us to think about, what do we do with that? So how are we going to use that for our school improvement? So one thing that was really important to me this year was to get super clear on our vision. Where are we trying to go? What is important for North Edgecombe students? And so we started this year by creating, one, an instructional vision. And this is really grounded in deeper learning, this idea of mastery, identity, and creativity. And you all are welcome to have this, so you can peruse our instructional vision. But this is the, this is our vision. You have to start with a vision before you go anywhere. So we created an instructional vision using our data. And then also, after the vision, we needed some action steps. So I created a strategic plan specifically for North Edgecombe this year. And all of this is connected to our graduate aims as well as the Deep Learning Framework of Mastery, Identity, and Creativity. So in addition to creating those things to give us a guiding north star, so to speak, of where we're going this year, we also are continuing to focus on our intervention and remediation through power. We, ACT, that post-secondary prep is really important. So we had an ACT course for our students, as well as a boot camp, really leaning into supporting our beginning teachers. The curriculum is very important to us, so we've commissioned a very rigorous project-based learning curriculum for our English classes this year. And one thing that I'm really excited to share with you all a little bit later is about our internship program. So this is how we use our data to create these goals, and then these are the resources that are connected to that. So I mentioned that we are very focused on this idea of deeper learning. Again, mastery, identity, creativity. If you come to North, you're going to hear us say that over and over again. And this is just a snapshot of what we think deeper learning looks like in the classroom and beyond. And so you see this focus on the curriculum we've had developed, our Power Lunch, our advisor, which is our social-emotional block. One thing that I'm most excited about, our multilingual learners tend to be a very underserved population. So we were able to convert one of our Spanish classes into an extra period to really support our multilingual learners, and then just continue things with our dual enrollment and community partnerships. So two areas I want to spotlight for you all today is our learning showcase. Some of you joined us in the fall for our very first learning showcase. And this is where every single student in the school, and every teacher, they all have the opportunity to show what they've learned throughout the school year. So we would love to see all of you on May 12th for our spring learning showcase. And here is a little recap of the fall. These students were teaching visitors things in Spanish. They were showing their artwork. We have art class this year. Different, this was a math project with the robots. So you should see all different types of ways learning was played. So now joining me to talk about our internship program. As I said, learning happens in and outside of the classroom. Learning happens both in and out of the classroom. So it's really important for us to give our students the opportunity to engage in some real-world learning experiences. But who better to share about internships than these awesome young people who are engaging in this work? So very briefly, I have Ms. Jamila Bullock, who is one of our lead teachers, and Ms. Marquita Burris, who is our internship coordinator. They're going to share very briefly about internships so that the real stars of the show can share about their experiences with internships.
Good evening, everyone. I am Jamila Bullock, and this is Marquita Face and Burris. We are the teachers for the internship program. Just some brief history, the internship program was actually birthed out of some research that we had conducted in empathy interviews that we had conducted on the North Side a few years ago. In those empathy interviews, overwhelmingly, these young people were a part of those interviews. Overwhelmingly, young people said that they wanted more opportunities to not only engage the community, but to practice skills and to learn more about their passion and their interests. So over the past couple of years, we built some programming so that our students can do that. And this year, we've implemented our internship pilot. So we have our three wonderful seniors, who are going to talk a little bit about their experience. We have Tanaja Miles, Eric Lyons, and Shakaya Highsmith.
So they told us they were really nervous, so they said they would do this if we asked them the questions, and then they responded. So we are going to take it that way. Bullock, if you will ask them, and then they can share their response.
So really briefly, you all can introduce yourselves to our board.
My name is Shakaya Highsmith, and I'm 17 years old. My plans for the fall is to attend North Carolina Central University, and I plan on majoring in recreational administration.
I am Tanaja Miles. I'm a senior at North Edgecombe. And in the fall, I plan to attend North Carolina A&amp;T and major in journalism and mass communication.
I'm Eric Lyons, 12th grader at North Edgecombe. And in the fall, I plan on attending North Carolina A&amp;T to major in engineering.
All right, so why was the internship pilot something that you all were interested in? And why is it something that you felt it was important to do in your senior year?
The internship, of course, was very important for me because I felt like I had the opportunity to also learn, just not inside the classroom, but outside of the classroom. It gave me opportunities to meet with new people, get myself out there, and get myself ready for the real world. Because when I get to college, I'm going to be talking to a lot of people. And I felt like this experience helped us get us out of comfort zone and just put us out there. And what we do at our internship, it helps us with what we're going to do in college. So I feel like that kind of gave us a jump or head start to our major.
For me, internships was a good experience and important for me to be a part of because it gave me the opportunity to make sure that this is for sure something that I want to major in when I go to college. And also, it gave me the opportunity to broadcast my skills and what I know how to do to the world.
It's important to me because it can help me expand my knowledge, knowing that I'm going to go into college to study for engineering, and I'm not just working with the people there that are very nice. They help you whatever you need.
And so for the sake of time, we are going to open it up to if you have any questions. This is our, more pictures of some of our other interns. But if you have questions, either for me, but especially for our students who are engaged in the internship process, then we are open for questions at the front.
Can you just tell us, like logistics, what time do they do the internship? How do they get there?
Yeah, so they go to their internships twice a week. We do go through our, on our bus, we have one bus that goes to the Rocky Mountain sites, one bus that goes to our Tarver sites. Students engage in the internship from about 8 until 12:30 on those days. And so we were very strategic. They have an internship course during their second period, and we're very strategic with their first-period classes. Anything that they miss, they do during our Power Block, so that we make sure that there's no gap in any of their, or any of those things. And so some of the places we have, Shakaya is at.
We're at Tarver.
And what are you doing at where, Shakaya?
So like I said, I wanted to major in recreational administration. So they have me with the, like, the academy with the kids. So I help them with the kids, just basically teaching them and all of that. So that's basically what I do.
That's Tanaja.
I'm at Tarver Coffee House. Basically, what I do there is I promote their business. If they are a small business, I use different social media platforms to gain client interest.
I'm at Tarver Brewing Company, and what I do there is, it's kind of like on the marketing side, too, like sales force, like information about other brewing companies that they could possibly sell beer to. And in the back, like, we look at how it's made, what it's made in, chemicals, basically like frozen.
And that's.
What's changing. Like, we can change the taste of it.
And that's connected to his engineering. So we try to place them in locations that are connected to things that they are potentially interested in, because, again, aligned with our graduate aims, students should be able to pursue their passion. And so this is giving them an opportunity to see, as Tanaja said, like, is this their actual passion? Maybe I actually don't like engineering the way I did, or maybe this is the best thing ever. And so we do have BNG Fitness, Boys and Girls Club. Again, we're Tappan Apple, TBC slash On the Square, and a few other places. We have 11 students engaged in this pilot this year, and our goal is to continue to scale it out in future years until this becomes an experience that all of our upperclassmen can engage in.
I also want to add, we also have partnered with the Montrezl Harrell Youth Foundation. In Montrezl, we have one student that's, that's interning there. And Montrezl Harrell, as you all probably know, is an alum of Montrezl Harrell.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I, I don't have a question but a comment. We salute, celebrate your kids, and kudos to you guys for coming to share. See, we're not really so bad, are we?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Bridges. I bring you greetings from Phillips Middle School, where we are small but mighty. I say that, and if everybody in the room can join me when I say "small but mighty", will you put together our staff, do it with me? If you'll do this with me, there you go. Our students, parents, all of our district support, and our community partners, we can make wonderful things happen. So thank you all so much. We celebrate each and every day. We're excited about the things happening at Phillips Middle School this past week. Last week, our teachers that were leading us in a lot of our initiatives last year had a chance to go to Charlotte and accept our banner for exceeding growth for the 2122 school year. So we are very excited for that. Yes, so now, let's talk about the work we're doing right now. As you all know, we changed our assessment tool for this year. And with that, as we get familiar back with testing and assessing on a regular basis, we use a check-in-one data. With that data, we do a lot of different things. But one of it, we just kind of measure how our students are growing from year to year. With that, you can see our fifth graders, which are now our sixth graders, and we track them to see how they're growing and moving for each group. Our eighth-grade group, which are now ninth graders at NOR, they're no longer with us, but we wanted to keep up with our seventh-grade students and how they are moving throughout the year. One of the things that we know to be true about Phillips, and according to the data, Phillips has always been able to grow scholars. In the 21, in the 2021 school year, their growth percentage was 63%. And last year, we were at 89%. What we are working to strive for this year is to increase our proficiency as well as our growth, right? So we're well on the way for that. Our school improvement goals is to improve and increase everything we did last year by 10% in or beyond, and that's in all of the tested areas. Our particular focus as it relates to school improvement is to make sure that our students have a sense of belonging and safety, to make sure that we support their emotional regularity and their growth mindset, to keep and maintain our inquiry base and project. regularity and their growth mindset, to keep and maintain our inquiry-based and project-based learning standards. We work really hard and work really closely with our RTI supports for that, so we strive to make sure that inquiry-based learning and project-based, project-based learning happens in every term, and we want to make sure that we maintain a ninety-five percent average for attendance for students and staff. If everybody's in the building, everybody's learning. So some pictures of some of the things that we've been working on this year, from the beginning of the year up until now. Our Dear Day, where everybody dropped everything and we were reading. Our STEM Night, our Spooktacular Day. Halloween happened to fall on a school day. I don't know where in the universe that was a good idea, but we made it interesting. Our scholars had a chance to dress, along with their principal, in their Halloween costumes, and the novels they were reading, they had a chance to make it a spooky ending, which was fun for them. Our Math Night Initiative, which has become our second initiative. Our Love for Bulldogs Breakfast for our parents, and Poetry Night, which is coming up in a couple of weeks. Student interest that we've learned, we actually have a Girls Who Code organization. Our STEM, you see the robotics picture on the end, on the left side, my left, your right, as it relates to our STEM initiative, Saturday Academies, the Phillips Leadership Academy. We did not want a traditional student government association, so we started the Phillips Leadership Academy and our Hope Squad. One of the, our theme for this year is Inspired to Inquire, and one of the inquiring questions we asked our students in the beginning is, what's in a bowling ball, and how does chemistry help topple pins? Have you ever thought about that? So some of our other strategies that we're doing throughout the year, I won't leave them all to you, but I mentioned our IBL PBL work, our STEM MCL, she works really closely with all of our scholars to support leading science and math. You will see a picture of our new science lab, a huge shout out to our maintenance department. We were able to get everything moved, and we got some things installed, so students actually have a lab outside of the classroom for science experiments. I think they are making rock candy this week. And we continue with our house celebrations, as well as the Forensics Science Career Exploration with NC State. NC State is a partner through our STEM Design Program, and many of our scholars, although interested in health and science, they are also interested in forensics. So, once you tell them they get to investigate crime scenes, who knew they'd be interested in that? So we're gonna give them the floor and give them a chance to be able to look into how much they want to learn. Do you have any questions?
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you. Dr. Merrick, on behalf of the board, I want to thank you for this evening, and this is it, first.
How many schools have gone so far, what did you say earlier?
We have four left.
Four left, okay.
Alright, we're well on our way, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to, yeah, I want to thank all the principals that were here and our students. Thank you so much, you did a great job.
Alright, now, six point three, mention of some dates, Mr. Perkins. Let's give them a chance to leave their statement. Looks like they're leaving.
Get in. I come this evening to give you the maintenance update. We're, uh, just picked a courtroom at Boulder Elementary. We removed leaking gas pipe outside of the boiler room, and possibly the cost was seventy-five hundred dollars. And see where it's bubbling up, that's, uh, where the leak's on. And this is your after pictures. For a long panel, we are waiting for the fire. Long panels for coke women stop. It should arrive in six to eight weeks. Uh, we've got, uh, South Edge County, we have the control valve. We replaced the control valve at South Edge, and the cost is approximately thirty-one hundred dollars for after pictures. And this is, uh, South Mill Underground piping. And, uh, we installed new steam and condensate piping at South. We've replaced the concrete blocks to the existing location. The project should be completed this Friday. The cost is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And this is your installation, where they, uh, insulated the pipes.
Any questions? Any questions? So you're on schedule to finish at South this Friday?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I talked to the contractor.
Yeah, I know we were. Way back, twenty to twenty-five months, nobody had said, uh, send it in early. Nobody had said that, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Hopefully, we'll finish, uh, Friday, next week.
So, as in the winter, where we had to supplement or augment the boilers and all of that stuff, yeah, you're, you're preparing, you're preparing to have these people not suffering from the heat. You have some alternative measures, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Matter of fact, um, he actually fired the boiler up Saturday.
Okay.
Reason why he did that, because he didn't want to put the concrete blocks back down, and wanted to make sure before he insulated all the stuff. So that's what he did. So he fired it up Saturday, everything's working fine, you know, but.
Mr. Perkins, I know we got, I saw them put the units on top of Tarver High School. I watched, I stayed, it was fascinating. I just wish I had a crane that I could rent you all. But now, after that has gone, I said that has been done. We still had some, some concerns and some questions about some things at Tarver High concerning, uh, the APs, what were they, have we, what is it?
It's your pubs. Uh, we have, we have replaced four pubs. I mean, they're old, so what we're doing, we...
So this is one of the things that we're waiting on?
Yes, sir. Matter of fact, we are, this is the fourth pub that we have to replace at Tarver. He should get that in, uh, next week, if we had to get on their schedule, but.
So actually, Phillips and North are pretty squared away, right?
Yes, sir. I haven't had any...
I don't get any calls from our, unless it's just principal. Alright, any questions? Okay, thank you, and thank your staff for, uh, what they're doing.
Sir.
Uh, thank your staff on behalf of...
I sure will. I'll make sure I tell you. Thank y'all.
Their whole system with old buildings, and it takes an awful lot to keep them up, so, uh, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Six point four, technology, Mr. Hayes.
So I didn't want to be out there tonight, I saw everybody was doing these presentations, so I'll make a presentation too. Ladies Board members, Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Bridges, um, tonight here, I'm giving, tonight I'm gonna give you some updates, um, from technology, and I'm legally obligated for these updates. This pertains to our simple policy, which is, um, a federal mandate, and, uh, we have to open this up for the board and the community to hear about the things that we're doing to promote safety for our students and, uh, in the realm of technology. Um, so I'll share some of this with you already on the, um, Board Agenda Meeting document. But Edge County Public Schools Board of Education Policy thirty-two twenty-six dash forty-two oh five, Internet Safety, provides policies for internet safety by addressing the things on these bulletins right here. Internet Access by Minors to Inappropriate Matter on the Internet, the Safety and Security of minors when using electronic mail, chat rooms, and other forms of direct electronic communications, unauthorized access, including so-called hacking and other unlawful activities by minors online, unauthorized disclosure, use, and dissemination of personal information regarding minors, and measures restricting minors' access to materials harmful to them. So, um, Edge County Public Schools had to put things in place to address each one of these bulletins for our students to be safe while they're online. And so, I'm gonna go through each bulletin point and see how we addressed it. So, ECPS utilizes a service by MCNC to filter our internet content for students and teachers at home and at school. Um, and this limits access to inappropriate matter on the internet and also provides security for our network. And the picture there that you have before you is the Zscaler login. So, at home, students will have to log into Zscaler, which, um, again, activates our filters so that our, the devices are filtered while they're at home. So no matter where they are on our device, they're always being filtered. Um, and they're also logging you on at school too as well. And so, we have that, and the report data from that if we need to. Um, if a student accesses a website that is restricted, a restricted notification will come up on their screen that says, "Zscaler has blocked this site, and this is the reason why." Okay? Um, we also utilize Bark for schools for cybersecurity, and this scans identifies and protects students' emails, chats, and files from potential issues like threats of violence, cyber bullying, and many, many other things. And the way Bark works is, if it's identifying a threat, it will notify the school's team, the Bark team. Every school has a Bark team, administrators, APs, counselors, and they will get, based off the, the risk factor, an email saying, "You need to go check this." They may get a text message, the school may get a phone call, they may get a phone call on their personal phone, and this is at night and on the weekends too. So we're all aware as far as that they're using our, um, tools to communicate, if there's a threat of violence or, um, safety or harm, so, that's a good tool. ECPS utilizes Land School for Content Filtering, Real-Time Data Safety Protection for students both on-site and while they're doing remote learning during the school day. Uh, this service, um, cuts on in the morning and cuts off in the afternoon about four, and this gives the teachers the ability to filter their own classroom content. So as a teacher, I can block websites if I want to, or I can allow websites if I want to, and what you see before you is the screen, the teacher would see while they're logged in, and they can see what each individual student is doing in real time, where they're going, the tabs they have open, and this is not for them to sit behind their desk and look at, but what it is for is they're working with small groups or one-on-one at their desk, the other students working on activities at their workstations, they can quickly glance up and make sure everybody's on task in real time. So this is another tool that we use for content filtering. Um, and another thing we do is we, um, protect unauthorized access to student accounts, including hacking, and we do this by having unique student usernames for all accounts, and also unique student passwords for all accounts. In grades K through five, uh, we set the passwords, and grades six through twelve or thirteen, students starting this year were allowed to set their own passwords with certain criteria, and this made them even extra safe for, for them. Um, so it was no excuse that someone got mine to my account because they're the only ones who knows the password, and we advise them not to share that with anyone. Uh, we also have utilized two-step authentication this year, so all staff accounts are protected from unauthorized access, including hacking. So if you're a staff member and you have a Gmail ECPS account, you have to have two-step, um, set up to, to use your email, and if anyone in the world tried to get into your account, you'll get this notification asking you to authorize it or not, so you can make sure that no one's in your account. And all our teachers are a part of that two-step authentication, um, and staff. ECPS also provides online safety training to all staff and students, including cybersecurity, cyber bullying prevention, staying safe online, sharing online, this is on social media, and your digital footprint, how everything you do online will follow you for the rest of your life, and other people can access what you do online. So we have modules set up for K two, three, five, six, eight, nine, twelve, and even for parents. Students traditionally do this in the beginning of the school year, but we also have month-to-month focuses, and they can also go back to and do lessons with, to try to learn how to be safe. And so, we are supporting simple compliance, we are simple compliant, all schools have, um, done these things. I presented it to you in a, a previous Boardman meeting, and so that is an overview of our education policy thirty-two twenty-six, um, forty-two oh five. If there are any questions or comments?
Well, thank you, Mr. Hayes. I never knew that we were that protected. Great, that was wonderful, great, thank you. Okay. Alright, six point five, Dr. B.
There are a few, uh, field trips and fundraisers, so there's an extended day, and these, of course, in between board meetings. Tarver High School, NC A and T University, um, they went on the Fourth of March. The fundraiser's Carver Elementary School, and some of these have started, but they haven't ended. You see that there's, uh, ticket sales, started on February twenty-seventh, ends on March tenth, ended on March tenth, and the dance is on March sixteenth. Edge County Early College High School, fundraiser for plants and for flowers, and those sales will go through the twenty-third. You see the prices there, so if you are interested, I'm sure Mr. Smith would be glad to have you purchase some, some items. Can last, can last in Carver for PGIF, fundraiser for Fred's Food Club to sell lollipops, the dates are March thirteenth through the twenty-fourth.
Okay. Questions or comments? Alright, hearing nothing. Alright, we move down to six point seven.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board members, Vice Chair, Dr. Wilson, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Bridges. I'm here to kind of follow up on something that Amy Pierce had mentioned during our class meeting regarding the non-waiver, pardon me, the, um, federal procurement non-waiver process request change. So, um, kind of just in brief of what's in your Board min, your Board documentation, what it has to do is, um, there was already a procurement policy in place, and really what we did was we just went in and had, followed the directive to create our own. What was happening was the federal programs were saying, "Okay, send us everything for your procurement, all dollar amounts," and then they realized that they were creating a holdup for the LEAs, PSUs, and, um, themselves, as far as having to approve it. So they went in and said, "No, take it back. Anything ten thousand, nine, nine thousand, nine hundred, ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cent or less, you handle it, and if it doesn't fit any of these requirements..." So for instance, in the middle of the notes in the item for information, the aggregate dollar amount, again, um, item's not available from a single source, which we already have a process in place, for instance, like number slabs that comes before you, you have it on your agenda tonight, um, and public emergency, for instance, like in the instance of the flood where you have no time to go through any process of that, and then, um, after solicitations, I think the panorama fits that, where you just can't find somebody else to be able to provide the service, so it's really no competition. Anything outside of those things, that's when we have to now send it if it is underneath that threshold of the ten thousand dollars, basically. So they just said that you go in and you require, you create your own written policy. What we did was we used what they were previously using to use that. We did consult with the Hurd Group and our DPI consultants, just to make sure that we weren't in alignment with their intention, and we created this form, and we literally, just like, um, with the colorful presentation that's standing there, pulled it right from their website and included that in there, so that's what you'll be able to see. One of the things that if you'll note, even on the slide right there, is that, um, it has the threshold where you would have been able to, we have the ability to raise the amount, pardon me, I see you looking back, I'm talking about your charger holder, right, looking around. Um, going for it, don't worry, I'll have presentations for you up there right now, we're just sticking to the, um, to the folder. But, uh, we did have the ability, if we wanted to, to up, to up the dollar amount to fifty thousand, but to keep it aligned with what we were already doing, and the federal amount, so that way, we didn't have to have anybody going in and saying, "Okay, is this one federal? Is this one, do we need it?" We just kept it simple for everybody, right? Keep it simple. And also, we're in compliance with it. So that's, that's what that is saying. Again, it really didn't change any processes for what we were already doing, what our policy already is. What it could do, and hopefully will do, is it'd make the process a little bit quicker because now it doesn't have to go to DPI to get approval. We can handle up to the dollar amount, you're still gonna see the same things if it's single source, if it's ten thousand dollars or more, none of those thresholds or anything like that changed, just a matter of how we're able to move it through the district. Any questions?
Questions or comments? Questions or comments, please, on? Thank you.
You're welcome.
6.8, John Matrician.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chair, Madam Co-Chair, Board of Directors, Board of members. Okay. I'll be for you tonight to let you know that I applied for a Equipment Assistance Grant in the amount of $19,800 for six of our schools. Their warmers are old, and they're not heating properly, so we have five hundred and eighty-seven, so we should probably get some bugs to project.
Questions or comments, Ms. McDowell?
Comment, let's start about this. I was just going to tell you since you're up here. I didn't open my little folder and look at my magazine until I got hung. And I pulled it back out today and looked through it. And that's the biggest little magazine in the world. I love your picture on the front. You have many pictures all the way through it. I wanted to tell you, thank you for sharing that with us.
One more I'll be sharing. That'll be the brain of my president, of your queen.
Well, thank you. You're representing us well.
Thank you.
All right, 6.9.
Well, here's Dr. Battle, if she'll come forward and share with us about Evolve.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Bridges. I'm here before you this evening to provide some information. I believe you have some documents in your board book in reference to the Evolve Express Security Scanner. Now, please, Ms. Cole, walk me through some board protocol because this is a little bit unusual. So, if I overstep, if I do something wrong, say, "Whoa, whoa, Battle, that's not how we do things," okay? But I wanted to share with you, these security scanners, you may have seen in the news that neighboring districts have gone to these new scanners. I've provided a couple pictures for you on the second page. That's the best way to show you. It mirrors the look of almost like you're walking into a store. It's free-flowing, you almost don't see them. It's a touchless screening system. If you see in that second picture to the side with the little, it looks like a little tablet, I know it's difficult to see, but these scanners, as the students walk through or anyone comes in the building, if something is detected on them, this scanner looks particularly for weapons of mass casualty or any parts thereof that could be used to construct a weapon. If it's identified in a student's, on a student's person or in a bag, you'll see there's like a little red square that comes around the exact location of where it's been identified. So, as they're coming through, we no longer will have to search through bags. If you are identified, you can freeze that picture. The student can step to the side, and you can search that exact location where the square is. These can be customized, so they're not intrusive as some of those overhead walkthrough scanners may be. And the best part about these are 4,000 people per hour. So, this will not impede on our instructional time at all. Students can flow freely. And included down here, you'll see that I listed out the pricing. This particular company is the only one right now that we know of that provides this technology. However, we need to do our due diligence, and because of the amount of the contract that it would be, we do need to still put out a bid per federal programs and our finance department. But here are the pricing options that we have. They operate on a four-year lease. What you're doing is you're leasing the equipment along with paying for the software subscription for four years. The reason they do this for four years is because the technology is constantly updating. They thought that it would be a waste for districts to pay for this equipment, and then more updates come soon. So, this allows us to keep trading up, if you will, with the equipment. The cost that you see here includes equipment, the software subscription, installation. They will come down and train our staff fully. They will also provide the annual maintenance for four years as well on all of our items. So, the other piece of this is that all the districts are hopping on this. I think some of our neighboring districts have approved to begin purchasing. Some of them are already installing. And so, what we were told by our consultants is that if we go ahead and start moving forward, we could still be in good timing to have installation in the summer and implementation in fall of 2023, should we choose to continue moving forward. The scanners are also mobile, so we can, they do, we can't leave them outside, but we can transfer them for games for larger sporting events. So, we can take them outside for some of our larger football games and allow traffic to go freely there as well. We did take, they came to visit us back in January. We, at that time, were just thinking about the high schools. We took it to some of our three comprehensive high schools, talked to the principals, just wanted to get their gauge on, would this be something that they would be willing to do? We had some really good discussion about how they could reroute traffic and parking and things of that, if it happened over the summer, to allow for one entrance. The other thing about this is it can run all day. Once it's done for entry in the morning, you could put that same tablet in the front office for anybody who comes through your building. So, it's constant scanning. Any questions at this time? I'm sure I'm even out.
I read at the bottom that it's for the three traditional high schools, and we could use the equipment at the early colleges.
Yes, so I did a bunch of different configurations. Of course, we definitely want to hear from the board what your thoughts are. That's why I said, if I overstep when I'm supposed to ask that question, please let me know. But we can do the three traditional high schools. And what happened last year was with our school safety grant, I brought, I was able to purchase the updated manual walkthrough. They are highly sensitive to and pick up on a lot of those things. They just take longer. That's what we used at Tarver High over the last couple of weeks when we implemented there. So, we could shift those to the early colleges because they have a smaller number of students. And actually, and we'd have to look, but I'm just remembering as Mr. Smith, the doorway is smaller, so we'd probably have to have somebody come back out and see if we can configure that single lane if we wanted to use the early college. But that's an option, that we have some highly sensitive walkthrough scanners that we could use at some of our smaller buildings. Thinking about our new early college as well, it'll be a smaller number of kiddos. So, we could use that until we're ready to purchase, if we wanted to purchase in phase it.
I just want the community and our employees to feel that all of our schools are equally safe, our high schools.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and so, she's listed, she broke out three traditional high schools, eight middle, and gave the prices. In the event we need to phase in, we want to first start with high schools and middle schools. But in the, if we say we want all schools, then you see the.
I saw it. I just want to make sure that I'm uncomfortable going with three high schools.
We understand, but we wanted to give you options, but we appreciate.
I understand money, but, you know, I feel like every, all schools are important, every child in every school, every employee, every.
And so, we do have enough that if we started with these scanners in our high schools, if we did all five high schools, we do have enough of the other scanners that we can now move those to middle schools and start some level of security screening at our middle until we're ready to make the next purchase, if that is a consideration. And so, we are not at the point where we can ask for consent because we haven't done the bid yet. But I'll ask, are there any reservations with us moving forward with the process at this time?
Expedited, and the best, expedited.
And I know we've heard from Reverend Privet and Ms. Kent. Does anyone else on the board have any feedback for us as we begin to talk about the configurations and funding that we can put together?
No, you can't put a price on, on the say. Number one.
I'll ask a question just by slight ignorance because of the funding for the early colleges. Colleges, if some way that Edgewood Community College can pick up some of the leads, since they're.
I was wondering that too. I'm not sure. And that was another thing. I didn't know if we can fit that equipment. I don't know what the MOUs and things look like, so that is something.
There are some things we share costs, so there may be some, you know, but they will, our students going through that interview would be. It would just be our students.
I think it would make sense to move in phase because of the cost. However, nationally, the last student I heard, teacher got shot with some student, four years old or six. I don't know how it was, but, yeah. So, all schools should be considered, but do it in phase. Get the money right.
I mean, you all have, I'm sure you all have sat down and looked at some sources of paying for this. Are we?
Yeah, so we would use advertising. The only concern is that you see here it says four years, so we could use it only through September 2024, and then we'd have to use to pay you. But we, it sounds like we need to go ahead with bidding.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for your support and your feedback, and we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you.
All right, appreciate that. Okay. 7.1. One, Policy Committee.
Good evening, Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board of Education Members, and Dr. Bridges. The Policy Committee met Monday, March 6th, at 9:30 a.m. to review policy updates as shared by the North Carolina School Board Association. Policy updates and revisions are noted in the board book by the table, the updated table, as well as the red line markings and the individual policies. Two additional policies were discussed by the Policy Committee. Those two policies were policy 450 class rankings and policy 430 district review admissions. Are there any questions by the board regarding the policies that will be reviewed by the Policy Committee?
Questions?
This is not a question per se, statement with the date on the policies that we're looking at at this time. These updating is what I read, and that's why we have these changes in. But the question that I have on policy 3450, I don't believe is, I can ask it now, but I will hold that question for close session.
Anybody else? Hearing none. We have motion.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the committee reports.
Second.
Motion second for the approval of the report presented for 7.1. One, for the, per the Policy Committee. You've heard that motion second. Any further discussion, questions, or unreadness? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by using the voting sign aye.
Aye.
Opposites, like sign. Aye, and that motion carried. Thank you. All right, 8.11, consent item, Dr. B.
We have two field trips here. You have one extended day from Bullock Elementary. I'm sorry, you have three field trips. Two for extended day, Bullock Elementary. You see that we'll be going to Maggs Head. You see the related documents behind your tab for 8.1A. Of the Middle Elementary, we'll be going to Williamsburg. And their trip is on March 23rd, shows you their dismissal time and the return time. We have one overnight, and Mr. Smith mentioned this during his presentation. Well, maybe he didn't. STEM competition in Roseville, they went last weekend, and they'll be going again the weekend, the 17th through the 19th. And they'll be going to Roseville, North Carolina. So, those are three field trips. And then, 8.2A, you have some fundraisers. So, you have Phillips Middle School fundraiser. They're doing Christmas tree, donuts, March 14th through 27th.
Questions or comments? All righty.
I will ask Mr. Hayes that he'll come back. He'll share 8.3A, 8.4A. Do you have another presentation?
Unfortunately, I don't.
We'll take what you did the last time, that was good.
I was trying to see which was 8.3. Was it the professional learning? Professional learning or was it?
Learning, many grants.
Okay, that was it?
Professional.
Okay, professional learning. So, this is the item for consent to apply for a grant from DPI for professional learning. This professional learning will be for the North Carolina Learning Competencies that they have reissued, they worked on, and we went to a training. My team went to a training about the learning competencies, and they want us to provide training to the staff. And there's a new group that they'll do at the end of the school year. But this $30,000 would pay for professional development for the teachers, if we're lucky enough to get a grant.
Questions? Comments? 8.4?
This is for, again, this is a DPI grant. This is for emerging technologies, and this grant is the amount of $45,900. This grant will support our high schools with technology to have esports teams. Esports is a, it's a new emerging technology that it's not about just playing games. It's about other skills, which these students will learn. Online safety skills, communication skills, teamwork skills. And then, there's also skills such as marketing skills that they will do. And so, all in all, we think that esports is a great way to introduce students and to draw students into technology fields. And so, with your approval for consent, we will apply for this grant also.
Questions or comments from Mr. Hayes? Hearing none, we need a motion.
This motion is approved.
Motion and second for the approval of consent item 8.3A, 8.4A. You've heard that motion second. Any further discussion, questions, or unreadness? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by using the voting sign aye.
Aye.
Opposites, like sign. Aye, and that motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. All right, item 8.1B.
Protect, look, this is the MOU between Edgewood Community College and ECPS. And so, in your board book, this is a five-year MOU. You have seen this before, but we'll bring it back to you. There are a few pages for the MOU. This, of course, is a cooperative, everything, high school. You see the targeted students, and you see the statutory mandate. We know that the students start in ninth grade. And of course, they get a high school to follow, but they can also earn an associate degree in various occupations. If you'll turn to the second page, it talks about the buildings. In particular, it shares which, talks about which building. But what I'd like to add here is that they are working on adding an outdoor learning common space at the early college. So, that will give them some additional space to kind of spread out and share. Mr. Smith has worked on getting some support from the college as well as some funding. So, that's note, I noted it there. It's not, we just wanted to bring it to your attention. If you have turned to the third page, you see that 2.09 just talks about the five-year course of study. I just want to, again, keep that before you, that that's part of the MOU, part of the application, and is the process that's used for Edgewood Early College, grades nine through 14. At the bottom, 3.03, this might be rare, but it does happen sometimes if their student needs to transfer into the early college from another cooperative, innovative high school. We'll do it on a case-by-case basis. And we'll keep rolling through. If you look on page 6.7, it talks about the college layout, liaison. And it's, we pay $58,000 to renew that salary. That does not cover the total salary, but it does help with the salary, just so you're aware of how much we paid there. And then, if you will turn over to the last page, which is 12.03, and it talks about if there is a desire to terminate the agreement, it certainly would be a 90-day prior, but we don't foresee any concerns there. But just one, again, as we look at the MOU. I want to share just some data that Ms. Evelyn Wilkins shared, she pulled together. In 2013, 14, the number of students at the early college was 151. And as we look at. And as we look at this school year, they're at one hundred and eighty-eight students. They've been as high as two oh two. Mr. Smith says the space that they have, that's about as much as they can hold. But again, those numbers have increased, and we're excited about that. Things are going well, you saw his presentation, and so we're very pleased. I just wanted you to be aware, the numbers have grown over the years. Any questions or concerns?
Hearing none, our motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the MOU between Edgecombe Community College, Edgecombe Public Schools, and Edgecombe Early College for a term of five years beginning in two thousand twenty-three and ending in two thousand twenty-eight.
Sir.
Motion and second for the approval of eight point one B, the approval of the MOU between the stated Edgecombe Community College, Edgecombe County Public Schools, and Edgecombe Public College. You've heard that motion. And second, any questions, concerns, or unreadiness? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by using the voting sign aye.
Aye.
Opposers like sign, ayes have, and that motion carried, eight point two.
Good evening, Member Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent Dr. Bridges, members of the board, and guests. I'm here tonight with you to ask for your approval for our ECPS school to participate in the two thousand twenty-two, twenty twenty-three summer program plan, allowing summer remediation and retesting programs at the conclusion of the traditional student school year. The summer programming plan provides our district and its schools the ability to provide remediation and enrichment opportunities for students in grades third through twelfth in the areas of reading, math, and science. Students that perform at a not proficient level on the EOC or EOG during the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year will be eligible to participate in summer remediation and retesting. If approved, all traditional schools would participate in this opportunity, and transportation services would be provided. Student participation in the program is voluntary. High school students who are in need of credit recovery for EOC courses will also be allowed to participate in the summer program and receive support through remediation. If successful in completing their credit recovery courses, students can receive an additional P for passing as part of the summer program. As in previous years, the readministration test scores would not be included in the growth analysis of school accountability or for educator effectiveness through EVOs. But the higher of the student scores will be included in proficiency calculations for our school's accountability model. Based on the results from last year, some of our proficiency areas rose as much as six percent based on the results of summer remediation and retesting. Based on the number of students who have demonstrated non-proficiency on the EOC or EOG in the past, we would like to offer our students the opportunity to improve their functional skills prior to a new school year, as well as the possibility to receive that passing grade on their transcript in terms of their credit recovery courses. We would also, of course, like our schools to have the opportunity to increase their proficiency on the EOG and EOC scores at the conclusion of this year. The program will run from June twelfth through June twenty-ninth across all ECPS schools. Middle schools and high schools would run weekly schedules for their remediation and retesting with one subject or content area per week, with testing at the conclusion of the remediation week. Elementary schools have the option to create their own schedule within the same timeframe based on what best meets the needs of their school in terms of staffing for the summer program. In all cases, students will be provided an opportunity to attend at least twelve hours of targeted remediation prior to their retesting opportunity. Included in your board information on this item for action is more detailed information about the program for each level and general breakdowns of the schedule. I will be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time as you consider approving the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three summer program plan.
Mr. Hall, at the conclusion of, so who's eligible for retesting?
So in two thousand and ten, they did away with the old-school retesting policy that they had, once they did away with those gateways, and some of that's in your expanded information. Once that went away, there's never been another retesting policy that they've allowed us through the state to have. This opportunity, they view it as more of an enrichment opportunity for students. And for your approval, which the board approves and allows us to go into it and actually participate, they've allowed that to be the only opportunity, really, for retesting to take place. Unlike in the past where students, you know, actually had to pass some of these end-of-course assessments in order to get credit for the course. Since that policy's gone away, they have not reinstated any type of retesting. This is the only opportunity that they'll have to do any retesting as through this program, and they must actually come to the remediation in order to participate and retest. If they do not come to remediation, they are not eligible to retest.
So does it help us?
Absolutely. So it helps us in terms of any student that passes and becomes proficient as part of the summer programming. They count in terms of overall proficiency for our accountability model in our schools and for the district. The part that doesn't count is for growth. So in terms of like for teacher accountability for growth or for overall metrics of growth, that is all used off the original data. And the reason that they do that is because all of that concludes by the end of the traditional school year and is sent off to EVOs and SAS, and it takes them so long to get that information back. And that the summer programs can run all the way through June, they choose not to allow us to use any of that information as part of that calculus.
So for our EVOs scores and the re, the retesting will, it won't?
It won't touch anything in terms of our actual growth, in terms of schools being met, not met. But it does, remember, in part of that accountability model, eighty percent of that number is based off of their proficiency, only with twenty percent being based off of the growth. So the eighty percent is the part that it helps us with. So that is the bigger chunk of the accountability model. It does still support us in increasing that with any students that are in here.
High school credit recovery, how many hours are required for them to get credit?
So there's not a specific set of hours for that. Based on the credit recovery courses that are created, they're based on subsets of the overall curriculum. So we don't do an hour-for-hour credit recovery course, which allows the student to get the full traditional replacement of a grade. What we're doing is a subset of the standards of the course through credit recovery. And by doing that method, what they do, it only goes down as they pass fields and transcript. And it does not go back into a grade replacement or a change of their previous grade. But it does allow them to get credit for the course with that P if they complete that. And that is not dependent upon them passing the actual course they retake in terms of the kids. It's just them actually taking the credit recovery course and completing that part successfully.
And on the floor now, there's a discussion about changing that eighty-twenty.
Absolutely, yes.
We just hope, pray, and call out, they just made us. It's real hot now. It is, and it's hot, so it's a bit of focus on it now. All right, any other questions or comments for Mr. Hall? Thank you, sir. We appreciate you. All righty. Now, I need a motion, eight point two B, they're approved.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the summer program plan.
And that will finish? And second, right, that's do it right. Motion and second for the approval of the summer remediation program. You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion, questions, or unreadiness? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by using the voting sign aye.
Aye.
Opposers like sign, ayes have, and that motion carried, eight point three B.
Dr. Dove will come forth for eight point three B and eight point four B.
Good evening, Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board members, and Superintendent Dr. Bridges. I'm standing before you for item action for approval. Here requesting the board to approve for services provided by the New Teacher Project, Teacher, TNTP, and ECPS for professional learning and advisory support as a sole source in the amount of forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars with S three funds, PRC one eighty-one. This collaborative provides a unique opportunity for ECPS to get TNTP to help us with guidance and learn directly from other districts on how they plan to improve literacy. ECPS has identified a need for additional guidance to improve literacy practices, specifically relating to the help of all stakeholders to understand how to apply the learning from science of teaching to the curriculum materials to support student academics.
Questions or comments for Dr. Dove? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the service provided by TNTP and ECPS for professional learning and advisory support as a sole source in the amount of forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars with S three funds, PRC one eighty-one.
Motion second for the approval of eight point one, four point three B, the services TNTP as presented. You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion, questions, or unreadiness? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by using the voting sign aye.
Aye.
Opposers like sign, ayes have, and that motion carried, you're still on the clock.
Yes, sir. So another item for action. We're, I'm standing before you to request the board to approve the purchase of the kindergarten ELA curriculum provided by Benchmark Advance as a sole source in the amount of sixty thousand nine hundred sixty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents using S three funds, PRC one eighty-one. This curriculum provides instructional resources to support ELA pedagogy in our kindergarten through second-grade classes. ECPS has identified a need for additional guidance to improve literacy practices. Purchasing of this curriculum provides continuity of services and prevent lack of instruction in our kindergarten through second-grade classes as we continue with the implementation of Benchmark Advance and using Benchmark as a vendor.
Questions or comments for Dr. Dove? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Board Chairman, I make a motion for approval of the purchase of kindergarten ELA curriculum provided by Benchmark Advance as a sole source in the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred sixty-nine dollars ninety-seven cents using S three funds, PRC one eighty-one.
Is that second? Motion and second. You've heard the motion and second for eight point four B. Any questions, unreadiness, or concerns? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by using the voting sign aye.
Aye.
Opposers like sign. Let's do that again. Those in favor, let it be known by using the voting sign aye.
Aye.
Opposers like sign, ayes have, and that motion carried, eight point five B. Pierce.
Good evening, Board Chair, Reverend President, Madam Chair, Dr. Wilson, our school board, and Superintendent Dr. Bridges. I come for you, before you this evening to request approval for services provided through Hill Learning Center as a sole source in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred dollars. This will be for Stock Elementary School. And the services that they are providing is professional development in the Hill Center methodology to staff so that they can continue and expand their Hill Center training. Hill Center is the sole provider of this highly specialized training, and therefore could not be procured through a different vendor. And for our new procedures from our Department of Finance, we will have to sole source this and receive the board approval for this. So again, our recommendation is that the board approve the training and coaching services provided through Hill in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred dollars using their PRC one oh five continuous school improvement fund.
Questions or comments for Mrs. Pierce? Hearing none, we hear a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the training and coaching services provided by the Hill Learning Center as a sole source in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred dollars for Stock Elementary School using funds source PRC one oh five.
Second.
Motion and second for the approval of eight point four B as presented. You've heard that motion and second, and a further question, discussion, or unreadiness? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by using the voting sign aye.
Aye.
Opposers like sign, ayes have, and that motion carried, eight point six B, thank you. You're still on the clock.
Good evening again. I come before you to request approval for sole source use of the Numbers Lab for Principal Elementary School. The principal will be, is planning to attend an on-site professional development through the Numbers Lab Micro School in Austin, Texas, for teachers implementing math routines and other core subject instructional practices aligned to the Number Lab approach to mathematics and core instruction during, an inspiration visit during spring break that they will be carrying staff to own. They are requesting this through PRC oh fifty. This is for an additional six hundred. Previously in the year, they received a waiver from our Department of Public Instruction, Business of Office, and Finance before the procedure changed in the amount of thirteen thousand for Numbers Lab to come and present and provide that professional development in the school site. So this additional fund will continue to put them above that ten thousand dollar threshold within the one fiscal year, which requires for them to ask for the sole source approval now for the six hundred dollars. So our recommendation is that the board approve the use of their Title I PRC oh fifty in the amount of six hundred dollars with the Numbers Lab vendor for them to attend this on-site professional development.
Questions or comments for Mrs. Pierce? Hearing none, we hear a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Numbers Lab to provide professional development for mathematics instruction services in the amount of six hundred dollars to Principal Elementary with funds provided by PRC oh fifty, Title I.
Second.
It has been motion and second by Board Member Worshley for the approval of six point, eight point six B as presented. You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion, questions, or unreadiness? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by using the voting sign aye.
Aye.
Opposers like sign, ayes have, and that motion carried. Dr. Pierce, this is in addition to what they already do, and they had a motion that we saw.
This is, so that was culled. This is Numbers Lab, so it's another claim that is related to that.
Eight point seven B.
Good evening. I'm here to ask for approval.
I don't know if they can hear you. We can't hear you.
Okay, I'm here to ask for approval for the calendars for the new, for next school year. One calendar is for traditional schools and I zone schools. And the second calendar is for early colleges, so both Edgecombe Early College and the Edge Academy of Health Sciences will be followed the same calendar next year, if you all approve that. So you have those calendars before you, and I will answer any questions.
Any questions or comments to Ms. Hoek concerning the approval of the calendars as presented with to us?
I know there's not much flexibility in the amount of the legislature.
Correct.
How would your feedback from staff?
So we did send the, the calendar out for the, the staff to provide feedback, and, you know, we, they, you know, actually every year, they know that there's not a lot of flexibility. We did have some, some folks who did want to kind of see a shift and move the exams to after Christmas, so that the Christmas break can start a little earlier. But when Dr. Batz talked to the high school principals, they overwhelmingly wanted to have exams before the Christmas break. Keep it the way we've been doing it the past few years, they learned to adjust, and that was their desire to keep it that way. So that's what the calendar, you see, it does have, you know, the first semester ending before the Christmas break. And then, of course, the Christmas break gets pushed back a little bit, which is, you know, not always popular. They want, you know, they're used to having that, you know, almost a full week before Christmas, but that's just not possible, you know, if we have to start so late and get exams in before the, before the Christmas break.
I know some districts are kind of bucking the regulations. A little pressure on as far as we really need to start. And I know y'all have the board that you're on, and superintendents want to see it start earlier, but it pushes them by.
It does, and so we have had some discussion around it. In years past, we, our students taking the exam in January, we see a difference. When you get to take it before you leave for Christmas break, having two weeks, and then, oh, come back and take a test, that's harmful. But, you know, I know there's one or two districts that kind of are pushing against that as far as the start time. I just don't know if that's a safe place for us to be. Now, if we see that it works, then we will join them.
They're going against, I mean, that all starting early.
Yeah, they are, we'll see how that works.
Right. The executive director of the school, she has done a survey, and it's overwhelming. Yeah, but they are not opting, y'all are one or two opting to do that, so it won't fly. Is there a big discrepancy in the days of the first and second semester?
It's about twenty, about twenty-five days difference in the spring semester and fall semester. Right, and one of the, one of the strategic things the high school principals have done is like, a lot of their EOCs, they are putting in the spring semester. when, when it is a longer time. Um, so that's, you know, that's one way that they have, you know, over the years have, 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 they've just, they've done, um. But yeah, like I said, it's one of the factors into it. We have so many of our high school students at the traditional schools that are dual enrolled at, at Edge County Community College and their new semester starts like January fifth, so it would mean they would have to, if you're taking high school exams, starting new, a new college class, it's just like no way. We don't see a way to make it, you know, work.
And districts have overwhelmingly seen the, uh, the, the disadvantage of moving it back to January. So they overwhelmingly want to do it before. So they, they've taken survey after survey after survey after survey from all districts and there are only two stepping out there, but that, that won't fly. We are gonna step out there.
And if you remember back like the, the year of COVID, we, we did that, we tried to do that.
We did.
And we kind of, you know, told, we can do it, yeah, so. We tried, we did try it.
We did, we did.
I'd say the one I, I know about is Union County and they're actually with a lawsuit. And the last I heard the board was thinking about reversing its decision.
I saw that, that the board is gonna reverse that, right. Yeah, so they'll be back in the fold with us. All right, any other comments or questions? But one day, I do believe it will change. I do believe, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of conversation about it at Benning. But, but I think once you get, and so who's that leadership now? But anyway, you've heard that mo, uh, and, and any question or comments? Hearing none, I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the, move the approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four calendars for tradi- traditional, I zone, I zone, I zone schools and early colleges.
You've heard the motion and second for the approval of eight point seven B, the approval of calendars as presented. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion, questions, or unreadiness. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by using a voting sign aye. Opposing's like sign. Ayes having that motion carried. Thank you, I did answer Dr. Johnson, take a center close at what we should.
I make a motion under North Carolina Open Meeting Law, Section one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, A one, A two, A three, and A six, to go into a closed session to consider personnel matters, to consult with an attorney to preserve attorney kind of privileged information, and to prevent the disclosure of student record rendered confidential under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act twenty U S C twelve thirty-two G and disclosure of personnel records rendered confidential under G S one fifteen C dash three nineteen through three twenty-one.
It has been motion and second for us to go into closed session as presented. You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion, questions, or unreadiness? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by using a voting sign aye. Opposing's like sign. Ayes having that motion carried, we'll take five.
We approve personnel management is discussed in closed session.
Second.
Motion second for the approval of ten point one, the approval of personnel management discussed in closed session. You've heard that motion is second. Any further discussion or unreadiness? Hearing none, those in favor let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose as like sign, ayes have it, and that motion carried. All right, now, we got it. Ten point two, closed session minutes of February the thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Our motion that we approve our closed session minutes, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion is second for the approval of the February the thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, closed session minutes. You've heard that motion is second. Any further discussion, questions, or unreadiness? Hearing none, those in favor let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose as like sign, ayes have it, and that motion carried. Any board communication correspondence? Do you have any?
Well, I just reminder, we'll be meeting with the county commissioner, Mr. Ellis, that team again on March twentieth.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right. Item number twelve, any-